Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Shrevnik.
Here.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda there is the flag, if you would please stand and join me in the flag slip. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, there's two minor changes. We are rescheduling the diaper awareness week to September 24th.
And no action on the CIP tonight, just the public hearing.
No action on the CIP, just the public hearing. All right, with those changes as agenda, if there's objections, the agenda. All right, next item on the agenda is reception. Our new part-time receptions.
Your honor, if I may?
Please, waiting for somebody's name.
Yeah, we're so, we're really excited, you may remember that we used to have a one full-time receptionist, Kathleen, but she retired, and so it took two people to replace Kathleen, no, I'm just kidding. Now, what we decided to do is, rather than one full-time, hire two half-time receptionists. That provides a little more flexibility and a little bit better coverage overall, and it's working out really well, but we wanted you to put names with faces, so Sandra and Stephanie, if you could both come forward and just say a few words, say a little bit about yourselves, you can come right here at the, either the podium or the table.
Right there, either the table or the podium, whichever you want. No, faces.
Yeah, sorry. Yes.
Hello, I'm Stephanie, and we're enjoying the position immensely. I live in Lake Forest Park and love the commute.
I'm Sandy Tupling, and I work 8:30 to 1:30, Monday through Friday. I lived on Finn Hill for eight years, so I got to know that area in St. Edward State Park really well. We kept our boat at the marina right over there for years too, so I kind of got to know this area, and now I'm finding out Kenmore is a lot bigger than I thought it was. So I'm learning a lot about it, and I'm loving it, and Stephanie's fun to work with, and everybody I've met has been great to work with, so I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Yeah, they're doing a fabulous, fabulous job, and we're really excited to have them, and so far you've received zero appliance repair calls, right?
That's right, zero.
Okay, all right, good.
We're gonna keep our record, we hope.
Thank you, ladies, I know a lot of times when I call, you answer the phone, and I'm just asking for people, but I really appreciate how friendly you are on the phone, and the, how you're representing this city, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I've asked them to stick around just for a little while, just to see how you all interact as a council, so if you want to impress them, just be on your best behavior.
Um, all right, next item on the agenda is the recognition of police volunteer Dennis H. DeVries. You know, I, I have the occasion to, uh...
Mayor, I do want to note Dennis is not here.
Okay.
Uh, we did get a confirmation that he would be here, but we haven't seen him yet, so just a heads up.
So we're gonna hold up, okay? Then I'll say what I'm gonna say about the volunteers later. All right, then, next item on the agenda is proclamation, and this proclamation is, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must, we must refer relatives and friends of people with mental substance abuse disorder to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the City of Kenmore, Washington, invite all residents of Kenmore to participate. Mayor, City of Kenmore, and the State of Washington, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim a month of September 2018 as National Recovery Month, in the City of Kenmore. I call on the citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's recovery. Home, purpose, and community. That this proclamation ends on that.
So I want to say a word of thank you to Mayor Baker and the representatives of the council. My name is Michael Redding, I'm the chief of operations with King County Behavioral Health and Recovery Division, I am also a resident of the City of Kenmore. So all that, much more, I really want to appreciate the council's efforts tonight to recognize September as Recovery Month. Recovery issues are so important for people dealing with mental health and substance use issues, and the more we can have efforts like this to speak out for the support of recovery, the more people can safely look for treatment in their community, in our neighborhoods, and seek recovery, and speak out for the support of recovery, as well as reducing stigma around mental health and substance use issues, so thank you for your leadership and your example, I appreciate it.
We're very fortunate to have a number of learned people on. Dr. Wilson Curtis, I know you would love to say a couple of words about this.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment how important this is. So I, I've been a family medicine doctor for 35 years, and people really do recover. I mean, sometimes you think it's hopeless, you can never change, but it's not true. I've, I've worked with families, and we have, we had our ups and downs, but sometimes things just, they reach a point where they have to change, and they do, and that is just so encouraging. It's what keeps family medicine doctors encouraged, to seeing people make good choices and changing, and it's possible, so just a word of encouragement.
Um, yeah, it is important, we do some pulling themselves up into... Uh, yeah, fine. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments, this is an opportunity that are important here into the...
Lori Jensen.
Hi, I'm a Kenmore resident and mobile homeowner here in Kenmore. I believe it is imperative for council members to take into consideration the housing crisis while...
Lori Jensen.
Great, thank you.
While planning the development of Lake Point and all of its amenities. I have a packet here that I'll leave with you guys, that was taken from meeting with the King County's Regional Affordable Housing Task Force. I would note that the county is set to lose all unsubsidized housing, homes of people who earn less than 50% of the average median income, in fact, out of the whole affordable housing needed. Forty-seven percent of the county, that's almost 50% of the population, makes less than 30% of the AMI, to which there will be no housing available that is not subsidized. Upon seeing the plans for Lake Point, a trail goes through where my home and that of my neighbors, to which means, where my neighbor's home sit, to which means that the plan does not take into account preserving, and in fact, works in opposition to your said goal in working for a solution to this housing crisis. Moreover, it is taking homes that are not subsidized, but owned by seniors, who have invested their savings, if not all of their savings, so that they could live out the rest of their lives within a caring community. This part of the plan not only destroys affordable homes for a big part of our population, that does make 30% or less than the average median income, but it also takes away from seniors, it takes away their dignity, it takes away their independence, and it takes away their quality of life. These are seniors who have invested in homeownership, and they've invested it within a supportive community. I'd like to read and leave with you guys findings of the legislature in the 2008 C-116, and I'll just read some of the key points. Manufactured mobile home communities provide, many tenants who, I'm sorry, many tenants who reside in manufactured home communities are low-income households and senior citizens, and are there, and are therefore those residents most in need of reasonable security in the sighting of their manufactured mobile homes because of the adverse impacts on the health, safety, and welfare of tenants, and I'm running out of room. The rest of this also shows us the legislature, it is not only economically much more sound than closing these communities and finding alternative homes for these places, but it also has a huge horrific impact on our environment that is noted that we need to start taking care of, so in closing, I ask again that within the developing stages of Lake Point and all of its amenities to the general public, that what is not forgotten is the well-being of all of your citizens, who is, the local government is supposed to be taking care of, or at least to have us part of the plan, who live in the city of Kenmore.
Mayor, we're over the three minutes, mayor.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Mooney.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, that's interesting. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. Great to see you all, and so I am here to ask, probably again, that you please direct my beloved staff to stop using our money and staff time and resources and consultant fees on the artificial turf and lighted ball field project at St. Edward Park, which in a lot of people's opinion should stay peaceful for the public. It's a rare treasure on Lake Washington in an urban setting where people who want to get some peace and tranquility for their mental health, et cetera, or who want to teach their children about the ecosystem, even little things like polywogs or salamanders, and then all the way down to Lake Washington, where there is hope to bring cocoonie back. You've got to protect it, especially given the Daniels Project that's coming in there. We have a grassy field, there are many of us who want that grassy field that is bound by wetlands and trees and bird habitat, peace and darkness, which the bats, and I don't mean baseball bats, I mean the bats that live in that habitat. Anything nocturnal needs the darkness, or they will die. They need the trees, they need the ecosystem, we want it for environmental education, we want the grassy field to stay at least as is, if not restored to a more ecologically, I don't know what the right word is, it's, if you just leave it as is, please, and put our money that our taxpayers play, spend on something that is better someplace else that's already impacted. I would really appreciate, I appreciate all of you doing all the work you do in balancing economy and ecosystems, but please, maybe direct our great staff to stop using our city money on that project, I would really appreciate it, but I'll keep coming back to encourage you. Thank you, whether it's money or the, or the ecosystem, let's bring kids in there and have habitat for birds to teach people about. Work with Audubon, work with professors that are retired, that are bird experts in Lake Forest Park, I'll help bring some if you want, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Paul Albers, Albers.
Hi, my name is Paul Albers, and I represent the Lake More Homeowners Association, and we're trying to get this project approved for a bridge construction in one of our developments up 61st Avenue Northeast, and this bridge affects 79 residents, 20, 21 different buildings. We've applied for the building permit, and this has been going on since February 9th of 2017. The, the erosion started on, on that day, and the city initially contacted me on March 8th, and the fire marshal was involved on March 9th. The city put up blockades so the traffic would not go over the bridge. Subsequently, somebody moved those barricades, and we're trying to get this project approved through the city. The cost of, of the, the engineering, the civil engineer, the critical area study, the survey, the hydraulic project approval from Fish and Wildlife, these were costs that we didn't know that occurred with this kind of a project, and we've just been overwhelmed with this cost, and I was, you know, here to represent the Lake More Homeowners Association as the president of it, and would the city consider on waiving these fees for this project? And I have also been a resident of Kenmore since 1994, April of 94, and I've lived in the same place since then. And to change the subject, Milton Curtis had said something, recovery does work, I have 10 years clean and sober, July 21st, 2008 is my birthday, so it does work, but you have to stay involved, you know, be in the middle of the herd, not on the outskirts of the herd to get picked off, because nobody is bulletproof, you know, it could happen, you know, anything can happen, and you could go back out, so that was just one of my other comments. Thank you very much for your time, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albers, thank you very much.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you all for your comments. Ms. Jensen, thank you very much for attending that regional affordable housing public meeting. I'm co-chair of that task force, and we really appreciate the input that we received from the couple of meetings that we've had so far, so thank you very much. Just so you're aware, Lake Point is a private development, and so we are certainly looking at things, and we are very, very concerned about affordable housing in our community, and we want to make sure that we do have housing available for people of all income levels, and that's extremely, extremely important to this council. Ms. Mooney, thank you very much for your comments on the ball fields. Mr. Albers, thank you for your comments, and Mr. Amson, would you please, I guess, talk with the city manager and do what's necessary and see what you can come with for council action if so needed, so, thank you. Thank you all for your comments, we really appreciate them, and with that, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 2019 to 2024 Capital Improvement Plan for Parks, Transportation, and Surface Water and City of Facilities. Well, we got a whole crowd, we emptied that staff table.
Mayor, certainly up to you, Dennis is here.
Okay, can we hold up for just a second, folks? If you don't mind, you can just sit in place and smoke 'em if you got 'em. All right, so, um, let's go back one, because we now have, um, this is, this, the recognition of police volunteer Dennis H. DeVries. You know, I can't tell you how much the volunteers do for the police force here in our community. I know on a number of occasions, I've had them watch my house when I've been on vacation, and I really appreciate all of the activity that the volunteers in our community do, and so Chief Horvath, if you would please come forward and do what you're gonna do.
Yes. I'd like to bring your wife with you because she supported you in the campaign, and you couldn't have done what you did without her support. You're right, you don't have to move me. You weren't part of this. Dennis, after appearing here for 13 years, after you retired about two months.
That's right.
Yes. He helped us, uh, start out when we were back at the old precinct in Kenmore, and he worked with the onways at the sheriff's office and our, uh, there was our staff, putting countless hours assisting with scheduling and creating a software program that would ultimately do the scheduling before we went to this new computer program that we're using now, and also assisted the city here as far as being altered with house checks, as the mayor mentioned, this mayor. So not only keeping an eye on this, also many of our residents in the city, also helped by creating some forms that are volunteer due, as well as other volunteer uses to track the mileage, first and so on. What I was told is that hopefully the mileage rate won't change otherwise we don't know what we're gonna do, because it's all, uh, start over from scratch.
Okay, I've been consulting, wow.
And you have some law enforcement, or is it out, right, so? The permission? We'd like to thank you, this is from the city, um, who's in...
Right over, right over there. There you go. You're actually a part of this. You're a leading part of this. I can come over here, we need the city manager in here.
Absolutely.
Join the party.
And I also have this plaque in the sheriff's office, again recognizing your service, and this is what the flag for one of those, if you're a candidate, but I also have a county badge, Mark West retired, so that can look back to you. Thank you very much.
I beg your appreciation, if you ever get a hold of the sheriff's badge, take it to the back of your driver's license, because I'm not just a cop. And, uh, you're a member. And you're all, I guess, you're a member. I'm just glad you so much.
I would encourage anybody in the community that is going on vacation to fill out a very simple form and have your vacation house check done. It's free, and it'll give you a little bit of mental freedom during your vacation, so it's available, it's free, so you take advantage of it. All right, now, back to the capital facilities.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council. If the police department needs help updating the mileage rate for 2019, I'll be happy to help them do that.
Oh, you know that now?
I do, I know how.
It did change.
Did it change?
So tonight is your first significant milestone in the development of the 2019-2020 budget, which is the public hearing on the proposed 2019 to 2024 six-year capital improvement program. So this very much represents a team effort between the city manager's office and Rob, finance, Debbie Bent representing the parks programs, Kent Vaughn representing transportation, and Richard Sawyer representing the surface water management projects. This is also council's opportunity to receive public comment on the proposed six-year capital improvement plan, which was first presented to the council for review and discussion on May 7th of this year, and again reviewed by the council at the budget retreat on May 21st and May 22nd of 2018. So following the public hearing this evening, well, we'll do a presentation initially, and then if you wish, you could open it up for public comment, and then following this evening, the next step would be to return and present a ordinance for adoption of the CIP at a subsequent meeting in September. The CIP also adopts the first two years of the capital programs for the 2019-2020 budget, which is why I say it's the first significant step in establishing our budget for the coming biennium. I propose that we go through the presentation tonight, section by section, introducing first parks, transportation, surface water, and capital facilities, and then each team member can go through their particular programs and projects, and explain them in further detail and answer any questions that you have. Would that, would that be acceptable?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, thank you. So in this six-year capital improvement program, there are 10 parks projects valued at over $11 million, 10 projects in transportation valued at $71 million, nine surface water programs at $4.3 million, and one city facilities project of $6.5 million. The first group of projects are the park capital improvement projects, and I will turn these over to Debbie Bent, who can walk you through these and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Joanne, so we'll start at the top. There are 10 projects, the first one is the Twin Springs interim use plan, and in May of this year, council adopted the Twin Springs Master Plan, which included a phasing plan and a cost estimate for a Phase One Trail Project. $100,000 is allocated in 2019 for a first... Hundred thousand dollars is allocated in two thousand nineteen for a first phase project funded by park impact fees. And the first phase of the project will explore the feasibility of improving drainage so that there is more usability in the open grass field area. An additional twenty thousand dollars is allocated in the city's operation budget to assist with park opening expenses such as park rule signage, trash cans, and improving the northeast one hundred ninety-second entrance and access. Are there any questions on Twin Springs? Nope, okay. Moving on to the second project, the Morland's Park improvements. In July of this year, the park improvements were complete, including the new playground and the new renovated athletic field, a new picnic shelter, restroom, landscaping, and pathways. We've allocated, or proposed to allocate in two thousand nineteen fifty thousand dollars of REIT funds to complete additional items, which were not included in the original construction contract. And those items include improvements to the eighty-first Avenue storm drain repair, and that is to connect the school storm drainage facilities into the other public drainage facilities. Proposed to add field netting and poles so that that helps with when people are hitting the ball that they don't go into the playground, so it's sort of a safety measure. Additional safety measure would be including some sort of, like, you see the yellow foam around the top of the fencing? That's an additional safety measure. And then, also to improve the crosswalk at eighty-fourth Avenue. So, that's what's proposed for the capital project for Morland's. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, what, in the project, it says truncated domes at eighty-fourth? What does that mean exactly?
It's kind of connect the walkway from the park into the walkway, the crosswalk for the, for the road crossings. And there's those little kind of, I don't know, how else do you describe them, Kent? Help me out here. Like an ADA ramp connection. That's what it means by truncated domes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next project, the Rhoadedendron Park waterfront and open space. And in two thousand seventeen, construction was completed for the, for the new boardwalk connecting the park through the wetland to the Sammamish River, and also improvements to the access driveway. And two thousand and nineteen, we're proposing seventy-two thousand dollars be allocated to complete park signage and related mitigation plantings. Eight thousand dollars of the seventy-two thousand is for monitoring maintenance of the plantings as well as eight thousand dollars per year until two thousand and twenty-two. Project funding includes twenty-one thousand dollars of in lieu fees received by the city, forty thousand dollars of ALIA grant funds, and the remainder thirty-four, almost thirty-five thousand in bond funds. That's the project for Rhoadedendron Park. Okay. The next project is Rhoadedendron Park float mitigation. So, in two thousand seventeen, we completed construction of a new float. And the funds here are a total of eight thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars each year allocated between two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty-two of park impact fee funds for monitoring and maintenance of required mitigation plantings. No takers? Okay, the next one, Squires Landing Float Mitigation. Two thousand seventeen, there was, we completed construction of a replacement dock. And the funding for this is four thousand dollars each year between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two, so sixteen thousand dollars total of park impact fee funds to continue monitoring maintenance of required plantings. The next project is the Squires Landing Park Waterfront and Mitigation. And this is one of the walkways and waterways funded projects. Refined concept and cost estimates were presented to council earlier this year in March. Waterfront improvements include new boardwalks and trails, boating facilities for hand carry watercraft, a new parking lot and restroom, and environmental enhancements. Seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars of bond funds are allocated in two thousand and nineteen and twenty for costs associated with permit applications and review. Four point six-three million is allocated bond funds in the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two biennium for project construction. And that funding also is anticipating five hundred thousand dollars of RCO funds. We applied for RCO funding in two thousand eighteen. We've not yet heard if we've been successful in receiving those grant funds. And then, the remaining budget would be four hundred thousand dollars of bond funds for ten years of maintenance and monitoring for mitigation plantings. And that would be beginning in two thousand and twenty-three and continuing for nine additional years. The next project is the Log Boon Park Waterfront Project. And this is also a walkways and waterways funded project. And similarly to the Squires Landing, we presented updated concept and cost estimates to the council and in a public open house format in March of this year. Improvements for this particular project include beach expansion, new trails, picnic shelter, boating facilities, and environmental enhancements. Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of bond funds allocated in the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget for costs associated with permit applications and review. One point nine-two million dollars is allocated in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand twenty-one biennium for construction, including five hundred thousand dollars of RCO grant funds. Again, we applied for grant funds early this year and have not yet heard if our application was successful. And also, one point four-two million dollars of bond funds. And similar to Squires Landing, four hundred thousand dollars is allocated for ten years for monitoring and maintenance of required mitigation plantings. The next project is...
Do you mind if I just jump in here for one second?
No, jump, jump away.
So, Debbie has mentioned that for Log Boon and Squires, that we plan to go to construction about year two thousand twenty-one. Is that what you said, Debbie?
Yes.
Which is great, but what did we tell the public when the bond measure campaign was happening? We told the public two thousand twenty-three. And so, officially, I want to continue to overpromise. Is that right? Overpromise? Underpromise, overdeliver, sorry. Yes, underpromise, overdeliver. No, I said it again. Anyway, I want to stick with the two thousand twenty-three for the, for our main message. Even though it's saying two thousand twenty-one in here, when somebody asks me, "When is that project going to be completed?", I'm still saying two thousand twenty-three because that's what we said during the campaign and that's what I think we should stick with. So, if we change the date and make it earlier and then don't deliver, then that's a problem.
And we're still early in the permitting process, so again, there's still a lot of unknowns on this project. But we will have it under construction by two thousand twenty-three. The next project, the St. Edward Ballfield Project. In July of two thousand seventeen, we applied for a critical area buffer variance and a SEPA application. In May of this year, the council direction was to proceed with an environmental impact statement, an EIS. And that is the direction we're taking. So, in the two thousand nineteen budget, three hundred thousand dollars is allocated to complete an EIS. And that includes seventy-five thousand dollars of RCO grant funds and the remainder two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in impact fee funds. Five hundred thousand dollars of REIT tax funds are allocated in the two thousand and twenty-four budget as a placeholder for future design and permitting. The next project is the Rhoadedendron Park Boat House. A preliminary design and costs were presented to council in, in the fall of, and for a boat shed to accommodate hand carry watercraft needs, including adult and North Shore School District high school rowing programs. Four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars is allocated in two thousand and nineteen for costs to complete design, permitting, and construction. Of the total budget, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars is assumed to be North Shore School District funds. The remainder two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is state budget funding, and ten thousand dollars would be park impact fees as a required match. So, this project is not going to be feasible without funds from the North Shore School District. We are hoping to come back to council in October to give you an update on the project of where we are on looking at design options and cost options. So, more to come on that project. Okay. The last project is the Squires Landing Park land acquisition. One point seven million is allocated in the two thousand and nineteen budget for property acquisition. And this is to purchase property for the RCO land conversion. The property at Squires Landing was purchased with RCO funds, which limit the kind of uses at the park. And in order to accommodate the proposed Squires Landing improvements related to the walkways and waterways project, we need to do a conversion to allow RCO, so that RCO will allow the city to use that land for more active kind of recreation. So, that's what the, the funding is, is there for. We did apply for a grant, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, King Conservation Funds. That is assumed in the budget, although we've yet to receive confirmation. And also, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of city funds to, to match for the acquisition.
Councilman Curtis?
I think I need a refresher on how the King County Conservation Funds help us.
They, how they help us?
I know it's money, cash to us, but...
Yes.
The rationale of how you can use that money to make up for RCO land conversion.
So, the, what we, if we want to use the Squires Landing property for more active recreation use, so where the improvements are going, sort of, so for the plaza and the restroom, the parking lot, for example, we then need to buy equivalent land for open space. So, the King County Conservation Funds are used, are being proposed to help purchase equivalent land that we can then designate for more passive, open space.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you. This next slide just shows the park improvement program balanced with the revenue sources that Debbie just finished describing over the six-year period. This schedule is also in the Agenda Bill packet. The next section of projects would be the transportation capital improvement projects. And Kent will present these and walk through those details and answer any questions that you may have.
So, we've got a busy, a busy agenda over the next six years. I'll, I'll walk through these projects in kind of a high level, and if you have any questions, let me know. SR five twenty-two West B, that's from fifty-seventh to sixty-first. That's a continuation of the highway improvements that we recently completed with West A. We left that design off at sixty percent, and we intend to resume design once the connecting Washington funds become available. And that's July first of two thousand nineteen is when the first allotment of the twelve million dollars that they allocated to this project will become available. Construction we're anticipating would be, would follow in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. And this project adds eastbound to northbound left-turn capacity at the sixty-first signal sidewalks. Very similar scope to the West A project. The second project that we have is the sidewalk gaps. And the city currently allocates a hundred thousand dollars a year to fill sidewalk gaps, to identify sidewalks that need to be fixed. And there's six hundred thousand dollars in the six-year CIP for that. We haven't identi, and if, I, I, we haven't identified the locations for the sidewalk gaps, and we'll do that in two thousand nineteen.
That also covers ramps, right?
You could use it for the ramps as well. Sure.
Anywhere in the city then? And what are the criteria that are used for measuring which project gets funded over another?
I mean, it could be used anywhere in the city, and it's, 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 it's really money that could be used to, to take advantage of the small gaps where you can fill. Or if there's sidewalk fixes that don't cost a lot. And that's something that we need to identify, but I, I don't think there's any restrictions on where it could happen.
Follow, it might include then, say, short stretches of sidewalk where the sidewalk is in particularly bad shape, maybe?
It could. Third project is a pavement preservation program. And the city allocates five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year currently to that program. And the intent, there's three and a half, roughly three and a half million in the six-year CIP. And the intent is to complete the Simons overlay from one sixty-third to the high school next year. And also do some slurry seals where we've done some crack sealing this year. And other, other, other projects will be determined at a later date. Arrowhead Drive?
I have a question on that one.
Sure.
So, we had that pavement preservation report that said that we need just a whole lot more money to keep our pavement rating up. Can you remind me how we got to four hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred and fifty thousand and why it's only four hundred and fifty thousand in the first two years? And do we think that's gonna get it?
I, I am aware of that, but I don't, I don't know. I think it's, I, I'm not sure exactly how that number was determined. And that, that council was going to consider it at a later date, whether or not to apply more funding to that. But this is currently what we have.
Okay, and we, why is it four hundred and fifty for two thousand nineteen and twenty, two thousand twenty, and then moves up to five fifty?
I, I can try and answer that. I did that mainly to keep the real estate excise fund in the black. And because in two thousand nineteen, we have some federal grant funding of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement our city money, I left the funding at four hundred and fifty and then increased it in fi, to five hundred and fifty beyond that. Since we're in the budget process, we're still looking at ways we can add to that five hundred and fifty, but I haven't yet been able to do that.
Okay, and then is there gonna be a follow-on conversation?
Yes, so this five hundred and fifty thousand per year underfunds asphalt preservation by a lot. So, the consultants, I believe, said we needed to be spending around one point five million a year in that ballpark on asphalt preservation. And this CIP only has a spending a half million a year. So, yes, we definitely need to have a conversation about how to fully fund asphalt preservation to keep our pavement rating where it is.
Thank you.
Next project is Arrowhead Drive, and that's a sidewalk project that we applied for Safe Rest to School funding. And that goes from the Arrowhead Elementary School to roughly sixty-fourth Avenue. We'll find out later this fall whether or not we get that grant. And if we do, we would start design in two thousand twenty. And that's roughly one point two, or one point two million. Next project is one, one fifty-third place sidewalks. That's also a Safe Rest to School project that we did receive a grant for and that we're working on the design right now. We anticipate the design being completed in October, advertising in November, and constructing the project in the first and extending into the second quarter of two thousand nineteen. The next project is one eighty-first sidewalks. That's a TIB-funded project from sixty-fifth to sixty-seventh Avenue Northeast. We anticipate the design would be complete in January, go to add in February, and construct also in the first or second quarter of two thousand nineteen. So, we could have those two sidewalk projects going concurrently. Use the same construction management team to do that. The West Memms Bridge design is anticipated to be completed this month. And they're looking to advertise the project in November and begin construction in March. And I believe John is intending to come to council to, to give an update. And obviously, he... And obviously, when they go to add and when the bids come in, that'll be more of a detailed conversation on the bridge. And that, again, 29 million in the CIP. Wantita Drive, pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. That's one of the walkways and waterways projects. We're currently at 60% design, and we're intending to begin the right-of-way phase of the project next month. And that will continue on through all of next year and advertise in November of 2019, grant-dependent. So we have three, I think, three outstanding grants that we haven't heard yet from Wash.pedbike, Wash.hzip, and TIB Urban Artiro Program. And we'll find out this fall on that and see where we land there and apply the following year if we don't get it. That's roughly $14.4 million in the six-year CIP. The next project is 68th Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Improvements. That's also walkways and waterways. We are at 60% design. We intend to advertise this project in March of next year and get this project going as soon as we can. This project is city-funded, although we do have three grants that are outstanding that we will learn this fall whether or not we get them or not. TIB sidewalk program, Wash.pedbike, and Wash.Safe Rest to Schools. Without those three grants, we think we can, we're pretty close to fully funding 68th, correct?
Yeah.
So those three grants would be helpful, but we think we can, you know, if the bids come in okay, we think we can construct 68th Avenue without those grants.
Any grants that we get with 68th would supply city funds and the CIP.
Yep. One thing I said earlier about Debbie's walkways and waterways projects also applies here, and that is, we told the public during the campaign that we'd get these projects done in the 2020s, 2022, 2023 publicly and officially. That's still my message. You just heard Kent say that we might go out to bid on these as soon as next year. That's great. But again, my official answer is 2023. And we'll, you know, we go to advertise in March of next year. Depending on what the bids do, if they come in high, then we'll reassess, maybe tweak a few things, and then go out in the fall of 2019. Last project is the 522 pedestrian crossing study, and we've got roughly $500,000 in the CIP for this. Construction selection will occur this fall. We'll begin the study in the first quarter of 2019, and the study will be concluded roughly in 2020. And that's looking at the crossing 522 between 61st and 68th. And if there's any other questions on transportation CIP?
None at this time.
Again, this is the Balanced Transportation Capital Improvement Program. And as Kent mentioned, we really didn't assume any of the low-confidence grants for 68th Avenue in the funding. We do have some local grants in here for Juanita, but if there are grants that do materialize for 68th, they'll help out the city funds. The next section is the Surface Water Capital Improvement Projects. So I'll turn it over to Richard. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving right along with Surface Water Capital Project. The first on the list is a new culvert at 190th and 61st. The existing structure has some failing headwall issues and voids around the culvert that have come to light over the last few years. We've been doing some monitoring and small repairs to keep it going, but we will be acquiring a Public Works Trust loan of about $1 million and a half dollars to start design on the project next year and complete in the following two years after that. And the next on the list is actually just, that represents the payments toward that loan annually.
So that trust fund has money that the legislature hasn't taken?
That is correct, and I believe we have a near-signed or signed agreement?
Near-signed.
Near-signed, yes.
That's good. Councilwoman Curtis?
So is this close to the issue that was brought up during public comment? Something on 61st and a bridge and a homeowners association? Is it part of the same stream issues we're dealing with?
It is, yes. So it's the same stream that goes through this culvert goes through the culvert that Mr. Albers was talking about. Trying to remember, I think.
Is there just to the east? Do you have to go across 61st to get to their homeowners?
Correct, yeah. So you have 61st, the stream. This is a public road culvert. There's a private culvert that goes into their development.
Thank you.
So this culvert really has nothing to do with what they're asking for, it's just next to it?
The next project actually represents an annual program for small works projects. So these represent projects that are a bit more than typical maintenance. So, you know, a single project might be over $35,000, but not quite a full CIP. So this money is earmarked for those types of projects where we may need to replace smaller non-stream-bearing culverts or reline a culvert or do a series of fixes for failing infrastructure on a road in a neighborhood. So that's earmarked at $50,000 a year. The next project is 61st and I'll, sorry for the typo there, it's actually north of that at 197th, but we have an existing late '70s drainage facility that has reached the end of its lifespan. And we are between 60 and 90% on a design to not only replace that facility, but improve on it with more current technologies. It's just an existing flow control pipe. So we're going to build a new facility that not only matches that flow control, but also will include some water quality treatment using new low-impact development technologies. And then also clean up some of the conveyance in the neighborhood, how it gets there and how it gets to the tributary 056. And that should finish design this winter and then be ready for construction next year. The next one down is on Arrowhead Drive at the 153rd block. This is to repair an existing conveyance system that's under capacity and outlets into Lake Washington. It will include adding a parallel system that will pick up the flows when needed, when they're at the high peak kind of rainfall events, and convey that water down to the existing outfall and then reconnect it at the same outfall location and convey to the lake. So this will eliminate the flooding that occurs on Arrowhead during those heavy rainfall The next project, and that design is near-complete and should be ready for construction next year on the Arrowhead project. The next project, SW 31. This is also a nearly-complete design project for an area of 66th and 196th. It's a dead-end cul-de-sac, kind of a little hook road, that the curve has experienced some failure and sinking. So we've been monitoring that for a few years and have put together a design with our consultant to address the sinking road, which is attributed to groundwater issues underneath. So we'll stabilize some soils and improve that drainage system and then rebuild that The SW 32 on 61st Avenue, so this is the 61st down, kind of above the Arrowhead neighborhood. Very similar issue, stabilization issues due to groundwater have been occurring on that, so there's been some settling also on that cul-de-sac. And it will also, we've had some very preliminary design done to design a project to stabilize that road, address the groundwater issue, and then once that's in place, re-overlay the street and address the settling issue. And that one has not been designed yet, so we'll be starting that probably in the 2021, 2022 timeframe. SW 33, so this is similar to above. You know, we have many aging drainage facilities that are reaching the end of their lifespans. We have kind of a few on our watch list. So this specific facility has not been picked yet, but it will depend on the inspections over the next couple of years, and then we will prioritize which ones need to be worked on, and then that will be selected, and this money will be earmarked for that retrofit in the future. And then last, this is the surface water component of the Juanita Drive project that Kent discussed previously. So surface water funds can be used for those components of those transportation projects that include new flow control and water quality treatment facilities for surface water. So this, portions of these funds can be transferred and help towards those transportation projects.
That's a match for our DOE grant that we have, we're working in agreement with DOE currently on that.
Yeah. So I think Kent touched on some of the pedestrian and transportation improvements of that project, but it will also be installing new flow control and water quality treatment facilities for surface water as well along Juanita Drive. And that is it for Surface Water Capital Improvement Projects.
Thank you.
Questions?
Ken, this is the Balanced Projects for the Surface Water Plan. You will notice in here is an assumed new revenue source that is being explored in conjunction with the Surface Water Master Plan or Surface Water Update that's currently in progress, and that's a general facility charge which can be used on capital projects. So we're showing it here as we proposed at this time, although that hasn't officially been vetted or adopted.
Yeah, a general facility charge? A general facility charge is like an impact fee for surface water, so it would be a one-time fee paid by new construction. So as part of the rate study that Richard is having done, we're going to be coming and talking to you about a general facility charge for new construction.
Can you tell me, I know you don't have the study here in front of you, but approximately, how much per lot is that fee?
Don't know yet.
I mean, I assumed you based the revenues on something. I was just.
We had it around 2,500 a lot, and we assumed about 100, 125 homes a year, something like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Very, very rough estimates at this point, but we wanted to include them in case that does become a reality. We would be able to support these capital projects with those funds.
Yeah, the main idea behind a general facility charge, and other cities have done it, and my last city, we did it. When somebody new is coming into the city and building a new home or a new business, a new commercial building, the idea is that others that came before them built the system that's there now. And so they need to buy into the system and pay their share of the system that's already been built, plus any impact that their growth has on the system.
So the last section of the Capital Improvement Program is new, and we're calling it the City Facility Capital Improvement Project section. And as you know, as a result of the Lake Forest Park contract for maintenance ending at the end of this year, we are on the lookout for property to site in new public workshop. And this schedule assumes that, you know, by the year 2020, we will have found a site and obtained funding in order to purchase that site and develop and build a public workshop. So the work that the team did and Ben Yazigi, along with the rest of us, assumed that this would cost about $6.5 million, so we've incorporated that into the CIP as well. On this schedule, you can see the timing of that over the six-year period, that perhaps we'd be able to acquire the land in 2020, start development and construction of the site on 2021, obtain funding in 2020, and then pay the debt over a 20-year period, we're assuming 4.5% interest, and that would be paid for out of the savings realized by the three funds, the Surface Water Fund, the Street Fund, and the General Fund, all of which paid a portion of the LFP contract over the years, and now would be relieved of that cost, which could then go towards the principal payments on this financing.
And if I can just add to that, it'll be paid for out of the savings from going from LFP, but there will be several years where we will be paying a net increase because of the operational and the capital costs. I think the number we showed you back in August was in the $170,000 range extra per year for several years. But then after that, we'd start heading back into positive territory again.
And of course, these are very preliminary because we don't have a piece of property in our sites. We don't know what it will cost yet, but this is, we'd like to include it in the capital facilities plan. So over the 2019, 2020 biennium, these are the costs and project expenditures that will be incorporated into the two-year budget for the various segments of park, transportation, surface water, and facilities. And I thought this was kind of a neat graph because these are the resources that are supporting those projects over the two-year period. And you can see that more than half of the resources are federal, state, and local grants, which is, I think, pretty awesome. And then walkways and waterways bonds are a huge portion, so really only about a quarter of that pie is paid for, you know, has a direct impact on city funds. So the matches are in there, and the notes for the city public workshop, et cetera, are in that final 25%. But there's a significant amount of federal, state, and local grants supporting these projects, which we're very pleased about. And this is the documentation behind that chart. These are all of the funding sources, again, included in your agenda packet of all the resources that support the projects in those four segments. That concludes our presentation for the public hearing this evening, and would like to know if you have any questions or comments before the public hearing is open.
Any comments, questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Since it's in the budget as a revenue source, I do want to, I have another question about this surface water fee. And so if, for instance, if somebody had a lot that was vacant right off of, say, 80th, and they were to build, apply for a permit, say it's a 12,000-square-foot site or 10,000 square foot site, they apply for a permit to build a house, they would then pay that $2,500 or approximate fee when they apply for their building permit? And the reason I ask is because I thought the new ecology standards required you to keep all your water on-site. And I'm just trying to understand what the impact is to the system on just like a site like that, whether it's just a buildable site that's been sitting vacant for decades.
Yeah, so I got that asked a lot in my last city. They're saying, hey, I'm keeping all my water on-site. Why do I have to pay this general facility?
I'm not necessarily against it. I just want to understand it since it's actually a revenue source in our budget.
So when you drive to and from your new property that you just built on, you're taking advantage of a stormwater system that's built into the road system. And so, yes, you may be keeping all your property, all your water on-site, but you're still deriving the benefits from an overall system that has been built before you came there.
So if you, but if you paid a significant... So if you, but if you paid a significant, significant amount for that lot because the prior owner had invested in that system, doesn't that make sense that it was already captured?
If it was a vacant lot that wasn't generating any surface water or being used or accessed, then they, then they hadn't been investing in the system.
Not through paying property taxes or anything, or?
What is, what's the surface water fee on a vacant lot?
Oh, I mean, it's annually $167 vacant.
A lot with...
If it's vacant...
If it's not built on?
I mean, if it's completely natural, it would be, there wouldn't be a fee.
Thank you.
Marshall?
Do I recall that the Recreation and Conservation Office had some process whereby we were getting somebody's approval at the county level, I thought it was, for the replacement properties or the mitigation properties from Squire's Landing and the additional open space that we purchased to offset that?
We have to get the RCO board approval for the conversions, so there is a process. So the city is currently looking at potential properties to acquire in the Swamp Creek Basin adjacent to other properties that have previously been purchased, so that's where we're focusing our attention, and that would provide sort of equivalent open space properties. So it would be the RCO board that approves, not King County.
Great, the board, is that a, King County's Recreation and Conservation Office?
No, it's the state.
State?
Recreation Conservation Office.
And can you give a brief sketch of all of their process then before the board, or how we bring it before the board?
So right now, we are working with RCO staff on the process, so we have been talking to them about what kind of equivalent property they think would satisfy the criteria for the conversion, so that's helped the city target where to look for acquisition. And then the staff would then give a recommendation to the board, so it would be similar to kind of how the council functions, where the staff provides a recommendation to, to you as a council, the same kind of thing. There is a public process involved as well, so probably later this year, the city then has to sort of let the public know where we've been looking and what the potential properties are, so that will probably be later in, in the year.
It's, I should probably know this, but then is that, are those replacement properties to be approved or allowed or approved by the board before development at Squire's Park?
It's, it's kind of all tied together, so before we begin development of the properties, when that conversion would have to take place, so before construction starts.
Councilmember Smith?
I have one more question, and it has to do with T-35 on the pavement preservation, and you may have touched on it, and I, it may have also come up in Councilmember Danizki's question, but we, so will we be receiving a paint, a, a, have a discussion about what type of pavement? Because I remember there was a big discussion about the value and the different types of overlays and surfacing, and when does that come to us, or how is that going to be determined? Or is it just in the rating that you noted in your comments, the pavement rating, as far as what gets a crack and seal versus what's an overlay? Because I, I remember there was immense benefit by doing what could be considered to be a, a different standard from what we've done in the past.
My understanding is that depending on the rating is what, what, what kind of app, what kind of treatment you would use if it's rated, I think I...
I think it was 70 or...
78.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just depends on if it's, if it's a good candidate to, to overlay, or if it's, if it's better to just get ahead of it and do a crack seal and, and slurry seal with that. Do you mind if I jump in? Sure. I think the short answer is we're going to follow the consultant's recommendations, and up until now, we've been using a worst first, worst first approach, and the consultant says, don't do that anymore. Says, you need to do more to protect your good roads and make them last longer. And so we're going to be doing that, using that approach, and the, the main approach we're going to be using is slurry seals, and that was his chief recommendation. My favorite is actually chip seals, but in an urban environment, people hate them, and it's bad PR. It's still my favorite treatment, but like I said, in an urban area like ours, people don't understand them, they're frustrated by them, they fill council meeting rooms full of hundreds of people, and so slurry seals seem to be a, still a good choice and a little more palatable for the public.
But if I recall, didn't, wasn't that going to be coming back to us to have that discussion? Because I remember it, it was a, it was a significant economic benefit depending on which route of overlay you're going with, and if we can maximize, in some areas, maximize the return, economic return, it seems like it would be a worthwhile thing to consider. Am I mis, am I remembering that incorrectly, or I just, I thought there was, there were some options that really could give us a lot more bang for our buck, and maybe it was the slurry seal.
Yeah, we're, we're going to be really emphasizing slurry seals now based on the consultant's recommendations, so we're going to be coming up with a plan of which, what roads to slurry seal and when. Getting ahead of, like a pavement rating of 7 to 80 would be a good candidate for a slurry seal, and then when you get down to, or, yeah, 60 to 70, then you'd look at a grind and overlay type situation, so you do a combination of those to get your best bang for your buck.
But the chip seal then is off the table, that's not even an option, we're saying? That's...
Yeah, the consultant didn't really have it.
I thought that was his highest economic return.
I, I remember at the council meeting asking him, what do you recommend, and he said slurry seal.
Okay, okay, I may be confusing him, I apologize.
All right. So, on, exactly the project member, Simons, and the overlay that's going to take place next year. The overlay that took place two years ago has already now been damaged. I mean, we've had crosscuts, all the way across intersections are not filled right. It's getting to the end of the season where they can properly fill them and match them, and so I'm a little concerned with what we've done before is going to get undermined by the work that is happening, construction, housing construction, and the tying into sewers and all of the cuts through the roadway. I mean, what are we going to do to assure that road is put back the way it's supposed to? Because so far, I'm not seeing that.
There's a, typically, there's a five-year, I believe, moratorium on cutting the road, so utilities are typically directed to bore underneath the road. They'll do some windows so that they don't hit utilities. But I believe, I believe the standard, the standard to, to go back and pave is, is 10 feet on other side of the disturbance. Full width if it goes across the road, or half width if it, if it doesn't.
Because right on Simons Road, right by Roderndam Park, there's two big cuts going all the way across the road that have been filled, and now there's, you know, that have been dug up and then repaved, and they thump, thump every time we go over them.
We can, we can look into those, but, yeah, if, if it's a trench that's been recently paved, often that's a temporary measure until they can come back and do a, either a full, full width overlay or a half width overlay, depending on how much of the road was carved in. Sounds like it went the full width.
It went the full width, and the problem is we're coming to the end of the season, so that means it won't be fixed until next year. By then, the project will be done, and they'll be gone.
No, we'll hold them to it still. No, they, yeah, they, they can't sign, sign off on the permit until it's all restored.
And then the strike that's going on, I mean, they're back to work all over the place, but they're not here in Kenmore. Back in operation that are sitting on 84th Street now?
I believe, I believe currently it's just weather. I think there's some rain and thunderstorms, but they are back from strike. As soon as weather allows, they'll be returning.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Marshall?
Might there be any hope of the sidewalks on Upper 61st, some of which most recently had slabs that were at about a 15-degree angle, and exposed with the trees, you know, eventually in the next five years, if it's not in the capital plan, maybe those will be at a even steeper angle, and I remember folks were talking about, or at least one person raised a concern about wheelchair access, you know, being impossible for that. Is there any hope to somehow get any of those, maybe the worst areas or limited areas, in, improved before six year, another six years go by?
I mean, that's, that's a good candidate for, for that, to fix that section. I don't know exactly how much that would be. I know it's quite, quite a lengthy section, it could be its own project. Currently, I think that the sidewalk gap program's intended to take advantage of small gaps in sidewalk and small locations where you can fix, but that's definitely a candidate to, to consider. Yeah, so John Vicente, our city attorney, or city engineer, wasn't able to make it tonight, but I believe his intention is to kind of chip away at those sidewalks in small sections. I think a couple of years ago, a few years ago, that cost estimate we had on doing it all at once was north of $2 million, but if we just did it in one or $200,000 increments, we could chip away at it over time. Is that the, do you recall John saying that when we met with him, Joanne?
I do.
Okay.
I, I think he's trying to develop a plan to do it in small sections, and the challenge is finding the funding sources for that, but rather than take it on all at once, he's trying to find a way to do a small section at a time. And even though it may not appear distinctly in this six-year plan, if we come up with a plan, we can put it in the plan and not have to wait six years to, to consider it.
All right, anything else? So, I declare the public hearing open for the 2019, 2024 Capital Improvement Plan for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and City Facilities.
We have quite a few people signed up. I couldn't resist, nobody signed up.
Forward all at once. I declare the 2019, 2024 Improvement Plan for Parks, Transportation, and Surface Water and City Facilities to be open. Heard on the public hearing for 2019, 20... Do you see any reason to hold this public hearing open? Hearing. All right, I declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance number 18-0467, amending capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. Ms. Benz, you're the development director, and your sidekick, Lori Anderson, is not here.
Nope, I'm going it alone tonight. So the Planning Commission is recommending approval of amendments to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan, and these amendments would add a public workshop and an extension of the Wantita Drive Northeast improvements resulting from the walkways and waterways bond measure. So the comprehensive plan capital facilities element identifies capital projects needed for the city to realize its long-term vision. Amendment to the capital facilities element is not required if monies or funds are adjusted or reallocated, but when there are addition of significant capital projects, it does require an amendment to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan, which is therefore why the Planning Commission gets involved in making a recommendation to you. So that's the reason why there is, is an amendment. So those are the two projects, and you will have seen those projects reflected in the CIP presentation that we just gave. So that's why we're here tonight, and here to answer any questions. If not, staff would recommend that you approve the ordinance.
So the two projects were, are you going to move it up the line?
No, nope, nope. Two projects were the addition of the public workshop, so that is a new project, and that is a result of the City of Lake Forest Park ending their contract at the end of this year. So in other words, the city then will have to provide provision of public works services. So to do that, the funding that's anticipated then is for site acquisition and development of that public works facility. So that's the first amendment. The second amendment is with respect to the Wantita Drive project. In the capital facilities element, it is described between Northeast 143rd Street to Northeast 155th Place, and the bond measure now is anticipating improvements up to Northeast 170th Street, so it's a significant addition as a project and also a significant amount of funding. So those are the two projects that we would be adding to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan.
All right, any comments, any questions? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-0467, amending the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan.
I so move.
Moved, and I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danizki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubneck?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to receive and file the 2018 financial report for the City of Kenmore. Gregory?
Hello again, and thank you very much. I know it's already September, and I haven't yet had an opportunity to present a financial report to this year, and even though it's only June, I thought it might be a good opportunity to do so and give you an opportunity, if you have any questions, to ask those, because we are nearing the end of our current biennium and preparing our budgets for the next two years. But I am, I'm really happy to say that if you look at the general fund and the revenues and expenditures, we are in good shape financially as of June, with revenues exceeding the expenditures by $1.5 million. However, there are some budgeted transfers that haven't been recorded yet of about $600,000 out of the general fund to other funds, but even if you take those into consideration and assume that they had been booked, expenses are still about 3% less than you would expect for this point in the biennium when we're about 75% through the period. And revenues, on the other hand, are about 76% of the budget, which is better than budgeted. So this is a good situation to be in, and I think that's due to strong and stable sales taxes and development revenues. At first, I thought we're maybe dropping off a little bit, but they've stabilized this year, so that's offsetting even some of the, the less than positive revenue sources such as utility taxes, which continue to be disappointing this year. On the expense side of the general fund, the city attorney budget, the public safety, engineering, and planning cost centers are all trending lower than budget, and so their projections to the end of the year don't hold any surprises at this point, so that's a good indicator as well. Most of the capital revenues are strong. Real estate excise tax this year has come in at $745,000 compared to the budget of $600,000, so that's already exceeding the budget expectation. Transportation impact fees, which support, of course, the transportation capital projects are also better than budget. Park impact fees, not so much, though, they are trending a little bit below budget levels, but they're not affecting any of our park project budgets because we anticipated that they, they would be low. The city has, in June, about $19.7 million in cash and investments, and about $8 million of bond proceeds, all in the state. and about $8 million of bond proceeds all in the state investment pool. And I'm happy to report that the state investment pool is now paying almost two percent after a really long spell of next to nothing. So, and we're also seeing about two and a half percent or better rates on our longer-term CDs and federal agencies like the Federal Home Loan Bank, which will help out the bond fund a little bit. Will earn some interest on those bond proceeds, and that will go towards our capital projects. So even though the September, or excuse me, the June financial report agenda bill has many, many details, I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you have any questions, to ask those. But I feel like we're really on track to end this biennium with a positive contribution to the general fund reserves. This concludes my report. Do you have any questions or anything that I can follow up on for you?
Any questions? Hearing none.
I do have, I do have a question.
Okay.
I've forgotten the name of that reserve fund that we emergen, it's not the emergency fund.
It's the Strategic Opportunities Fund.
Yes, do we pay that back if we have extra money instead of going into the general fund?
Yes, that is our plan, is to pay that back when we have extra general fund reserves. Now, I anticipate this year, even though our operational budget will have good reserves, we do have those startup costs for the public workshop that I think we will probably use a lot of those excess reserves, which is good. It will be in that position to have those. But we have about $800,000 worth of anticipated startup costs.
Thank you.
However, our policy is to fund the Strategic Opportunities Funds when there are good years where we have more than our budgeted fund balance. And at this point, it has about 1.8 million dollars.
Some years ago, Councilmember Smith was concerned about the bridge replacement. And we set up a fund.
We did.
And that money has gone to the bridge replacement?
Yes. No sooner had we set that fund up than, and we funded it with, I believe, about $87,000 or $83,000 the first year for our far-off future replacement. I mean, we used some of that money initially to have the Jacobs team evaluate the bridge to come to the realization that we, it wasn't going to be a long-term replacement. So we've used that now just to account for the whole bridge project in that fund, all of the revenues and all the expenditures related to the bridge replacement projects in that fund.
Okay, so that fund is still being utilized?
It's still being utilized, yes.
And when the bridge goes away, that fund will go away?
Yes. Unless we make a profit on it, and then.
Well, then I'll start the Ball Field Replacement Fund. Did I tell you about that?
All right.
Thank you.
So Chair will entertain a motion to receive and file the 2018 financial report for the City of Kenmore.
Tell me.
And I'll second. Fine, this one is easy. We'll just do, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foesed? Except the report unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, staff report, city manager.
Yeah, just one thing, Your Honor. Staff has been working really hard to prepare the 2019-2020 biennial budget. And can you believe that I'm saying 2020? It's amazing. But yeah, especially led by our finance director, Joanne Gregory. She's put a ton of work into it so far. So we plan on presenting to you a balanced summary level budget on September 24th. I actually won't be here that night, I, I'm sorry to say. But we do plan on having that budget for you to look at that night. We're probably going to have it uploaded to the packet several days in advance of that. But I got to tell you, it's getting tougher and tougher to balance the budget. Our fixed costs are just base, no change programs. The cost of those are rising faster than the revenues we're bringing in. And we've done things to kick that can down the road and keep the financial lines from crossing. But we're running out of ways to keep those lines from crossing. At least administrative and accounting ways of keeping those lines from crossing. And so Joanne and I were meeting to go over all of the, all of what's been input into the next biennium budget just this evening, or just this afternoon. And as of right now, I don't have a balanced budget. We've still got to do more cutting to get to a balanced budget. And it's, it's going, these next few days of cutting are going to hurt and it's going to be painful. But our goal is to, to bring you a balanced budget. I am, I am contemplating tapping into a little bit of banked capacity on property tax. So instead of increasing it by one percent, which we're, we're allowed to do, we're also allowed to tap into banked capacity, which is increases that the prior councils have not taken in prior years. So I may be proposing a three percent increase in property tax just to keep up with costs. An example of that is the police budget. Just to keep the police operations the same, I've got to find $150,000 of new money every year, just no changes in the police department programs. I've got to find $150,000, give or take, for police every year. So I didn't mean for this to turn into a big speech or discussion, but it's, it's a preview of what we're struggling with and some of the discussions we're going to have when we get into the budget deliberations on the 24th and then into the month of October.
All right. Councilmember reports, comments and issues, Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Marshall?
No report.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to add.
So I managed to keep myself busy. And. I put this at your place, this letter. I sent out an email the other day saying, if nobody said anything by five, I was going to sign. Nobody said anything, I signed, but I wanted to see what I'm signing for the City of Kenmore. It's basically to, to make sure that the inquest, when there is a shooting or that, that incorporates the new law that was passed by the legislature, and it makes the process, it makes sure the process will hear from the families and the other parties concerned and actually listen. And I, I serve on the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight Committee, which is called now the city, no, Community Law Enforcement Oversight. This goes along with what they're wanting, but this is a thing that the chiefs have been wanting, and the chiefs are weighing in on, and we wanted, as a group of cities, to put our, our stamp on it to say, hey, take your time and do it right, because this is a very important process. While all the cities in the county have the opportunity, or in the state have the opportunity to hold inquests, we're the only ones that do, the King County. So we want to make sure it's done and continues to be done right. I had the opportunity, being on Sound Transit Board, to sit next to Roger Millar, the Secretary of Department of Transportation, last meeting. And I talked to him about the thoughts of some people to take 145th Street or Highway 523 from two lanes of traffic in each direction down to one lane of traffic in each direction. Going to check into it because he hadn't heard of that before. But I can't imagine a state highway being taken from two lanes each direction to one lane each direction. It just doesn't make sense. Sound Transit is talking to the board about starting 130th Street Station early. That's the one down in Seattle. That's the one that they were trying to tell us that we should be going to instead of 145th. It's the 130th. And so the station will be open by 2024, the same time as the 145th Street Station will be open. And they're doing it for a scale of economy, and they're, they're also doing it because if they wait until it would normally be constructed, there would be an active train on that line. And it would be very, very difficult to just, to construct that station with a train running through. So they're looking to do that. And I'm very concerned about them shifting the destination of the Bus Rapid Transit that we're getting from the 145th Street Station to the 130th Street. Trying to make sure our voices are heard. Decision is going to be made very soon about where the parking garage is going to go. And so the city has signed an agreement with Sound Transit now. And what's that agreement called that I keep forgetting?
Partner.
Yeah, partnering agreement.
Oh, the partnering agreement. So they are moving along, and they, I'm sure that they will have all the gar, all of the parking garages sited by the end of the year. So it's moving very, very quickly.
And, and our assumption is that the parking garage here in Kenmore would be in, on the Lake Point Project. Is, that's not a surprise to anybody, is it?
So, yes, we are, we are actively pursuing that as, as the final place for the, for the parking garage. And we're also act, actually after a station here at 68 and 73rd.
Yeah.
So, and that'll tie into the overhead crossing they're talking about and everything else. So we're trying to stay on top of this and make sure that projects we asked for way back when with the 522 Coalition are the projects that we get. So if there's no other business to come before us, we're adjourned.